Good evening. I want to call to order the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission meeting for March 13th, 2023. Good to see each of you here this evening. At this time, I'm going to ask Lee Bogle to do our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that you bring us here together. We thank you for the many blessings that you've poured out among us in this country, in this state, in this county. We certainly enjoy seeing things bloom again and things being made new again as life continues on. And Heavenly Father, we just ask that you watch over us as we conduct this meeting tonight, that the discussion and the decisions made here will be found pleasing to the majority of Rutherford County citizens, and that you will find it pleasing in your sight as well, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our emergency services, and our military, and those that watch over and guide and protect us each and every day in this country, and we ask that you watch over each one of them. In your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogle. Good to see all of you here this evening, and at this time, I'm going to ask our secretary to call a roll and determination of quorum.
Tim Everwater. Jeff Phillips. Mike Kush. Lee Bogle. Charlotte P. Craig Gooch. David Jones. Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth. Jim Thompson. Tedis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Now, we'll have the approval of our minutes, February the 27th, 2023. Vice Chairman, Bogle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes of the February 27th meeting and found those to be in good order, and therefore make a motion for approval.
A motion for approval. Do we have a second? Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, they are approved. Do we have any items withdrawn or deferred? Do not have any withdrawn or deferred. So we move directly into our new business. This is our rezoning and ordinance amendments request. Just a reminder that all rezoning requests will be considered on April 13th, 2023, Board of Commissioners meeting, unless deferred or withdrawn by the Planning Commission or applicant. Again, with item number one, which is Craig Coke by Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering, REZ 23006. Location is Baker Road. Commissioner is District 19, Romel McMurray. Size of site is approximately 2.08 acres. Tax map, 49 parcel, 129.03. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. The applicant would like to rezone the subject property, as was stated, to commercial services. They don't have any development plans at this time, so you do not have a concept plan attached with your agenda materials. Some ideas that have been mentioned to staff have been possibly combining this with the surrounding tract, which is an existing mini warehouse facility, so a possible expansion to that, maybe just general retail, something to that effect. But again, no specific uses have been identified at this time. Parking right now would, or I'm sorry, access would be onto Baker Road directly. Now, should that change, and they do combine that with the adjacent property, I would expect to see another site plan come through, and we would just have to look at access whenever it came through. But at this time, again, not knowing exactly what they're proposing, it's a little bit up in the air in that regard. Of course, as with any development, should this be approved, it would have to be approved through an engineered site plan that'd be submitted to our department for review, more than likely to come before, back before the Planning Commission as well. That would include access, that would include parking, you know, any parking spaces, the design of those. Of course, landscaping and buffering as well. Commercial zones are required to place a type two buffer against residentially zoned property. The property along the interior lines are actually already adjacent to commercially zoned property, so they wouldn't need anything along that line. However, they would along the line between that property, the one Mike's highlighting, and that'd be the property to the west. We do feel that this request is consistent with the recommendations of the county's comprehensive plan. Again, this property is surrounded almost entirely by commercial zoning, except to the west. You see across the streets, already zoned commercial neighborhood as well. Really, what you're looking at here is them squaring up that area right through there. Don't think we really had any calls about this that I recall receiving, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant's representative is present.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? If not, we'll ask that the applicant come forward at this time. Good evening.
Chairman Reed, Commissioners, my name's Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here to answer any questions, see if you may have. And as Doug had mentioned, this is really to square off the property, be consistent with commercial services, basically to create a square. It is the same ownership group, so the intention is more than likely to expand the self-storage that's currently on the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With no questions at this time, then we'll move into our public comment period. When we open this up, anyone who would like to come forward and have any public comments, either for or against, any comments about this property, you'll have, you'll have three minutes to do so. I'll now open the public comment period on this piece of property. Anyone that has any comments, we'll ask that you come forward at this time. Let us have your name and your address.
My name is Shawna Mason, and I live at 588 Baker Road. We actually live right almost kind of corner to this property. My mother actually lives closer to this property. We really, as far as if it is a expansion of the storage unit, we really don't have issues with that, but we've been also told that they're thinking of selling that off to do some kind of other sort of commercial. And if that's the case, we actually, you know, I mean, it's going to bring extra traffic there. It's already hard to get in and out of Baker Road there, and it's just, you know, unfortunate that it would, it would just bring extra traffic and hurt our property values, to be honest with you. I mean, we built our dream house there, and it's just really upsetting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else for comment? If not, I'm closing the comment period. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Bogle?
If this property is left in standalone status, is there availability of sewer, or do we know much about if it's on its ability to stand alone as a commercial service for either the septic or sewer?
Well, there's no sanitary sewer in this area from, and it would be served by the town of Smyrna. Now, Mike, you can look at the map that he has there. It is identifying some what appears to be suitable soils for septic systems on that property. Of course, depending on what they want to do on the property, and what kind of septic soil is available, and how much, of course, they're going to lose some of it because of the building location, the parking areas, things like that. The size of the property just isn't that large. I mean, that's going to limit in large part the intensity of what can happen.
That's what I was seeing, is what's about, it's a little over two acres, and so, okay.
And once you put in the area for screening and buffering, once you look at the parking area, detention.
Seems to narrow down quickly, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, you're really taking out a lot of usable area. So even if it were a freestanding commercial site, you know, how large is it really going to be? It's difficult to say.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was thinking as well.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, I'm just wondering, when they rezoned the property and built the storage units there, why didn't they include this in that, at the time?
You know, the applicant may be in a better position to answer that. I'm not sure if it was under the same ownership at that time. So it could be just a situation that this was owned by somebody else, and they owned all around it, and just, that's what they had.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, just, I guess I'm going to get to be known as a traffic cop down on this committee here. I mean, that's the first thing we heard, is traffic. Just looking at the comments in the notes here on page two, it looks like the traffic count may have actually gone down. 2021 showing 1,800 vehicles per day, yet in 2019, we had 5,428. I'm very familiar with this intersection. I'm very familiar with that storage location. And I'm sure the traffic that the resident was just talking about is because it's right there at a stop sign at Baker Road. I'm still kind of at a lost understanding where we would call traffic being of a concern at Baker Road at that intersection. If someone could help me understand what, is it 10,000 cars coming in there we'd be concerned about, or should we be concerned with the 2,000 that we've got dealing with?
Well, understand too, the traffic count that is out there was done about a half mile to the west of that, of the subject property, so it's not right there at that intersection. Now, I was a little perplexed, like you were, as far as why the traffic count went down so much. You know, I understand 2020, the counts all kind of went down, you know, all around the county, simply because of the issues we were dealing with with COVID and everything. So that wasn't so surprising. What was surprising was just how much it went down, and that the fact it really hasn't recovered all that much. A lot of the other traffic counts, we see, yeah, we see it dip, then we see it kind of come back up, which leads me to believe that there's other factors at play here. Now, what exactly that is, I don't know. Now, something I will say, and Mike can feel free to chime in, as of right now, we haven't required any kind of a traffic study, just because we don't know what exactly the use is that they're proposing. If this is approved for the zoning, and they ever submit a site plan, we have the ability at that point to require a traffic study to see if any improvements are needed onto Baker Road into the develop, or into the subject property. If it's combined with the surrounding property, they may just keep the existing access they have on Old Nashville Highway. You know, they may add a second access. I don't know. We'd have to wait and see. But at that point, we'd also look at all the intersections around. We probably would consider that intersection at Old Nashville Highway and Baker Road. We'd probably look at some to the west as well. But we, we're not losing our ability to require a traffic study, and for possible road improvements, even if this is approved tonight, and ultimately by the county commission.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Whitworth. Do either of you guys know whether there is ever a proposal for a traffic light at end of Baker Road and Old Nashville Highway?
I don't know of any personally.
Well, in my former life, I have come there at, in the mornings, and tried to turn left. That's not good. And it didn't take me but about twice to figure out you did not want to come to Old Nashville Highway on Baker and, and turn left, so you find an alternative route. And so I'm assuming, and we may talk more about this later, I'm assuming that by this property, there'll be times in early morning heavy traffic that the traffic will back up past this property.
But no, sir, I have not, I have not heard of any warrant analysis at that intersection. But depends on what's coming. If a large traffic user comes to this site, we'll see that at a site plan level, and we can definitely look at.
Something will have to be addressed at some point on the site plan, if we're going to, it's, it's, it will have to be addressed.
Yes, sir. Right.
Because.
And we, we had a preliminary meeting, and that intersection did come up, that it definitely needs some improvements. You recall the development on Central Valley and Lebanon Pike? There's three big residential developments coming in. Well, that intersection was already, needed a traffic signal, even before this, this development had, any of these developments had come on board, but they agreed to all cost share, well, two of the three agreed to cost share and, and install that traffic signal. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Bogle?
Quick question for Doug. I'm okay with the zoning if we're talking about expanding the mini storage, because that's part of that site, and it's, it can be a part of a development plan. I'm not okay with approving the zoning as it sits on a, this isn't quite a speculative nature, but in a way it is, because we don't know what's being proposed there. If it gets approved and they pursue another commercial services requirement meeting entity of some sort, do we have the ability to still require traffic studies and those things at that time, or is it too late if we approve it and it's basically you can do what you want?
No, we still have that ability, regardless of what the use is.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because I.
Yes, sir.
I'm okay if they're saying they want to expand the mini storage. I'm not okay not knowing what's going in there, because I don't want to constrain us on the ability to be able to make intersection improvements and things like that.
Now, what we have to look at is, obviously, we have to look at things, you know, is the impact of the proposed use, is it proportional to the improvements that we're asking them to make? You know, we couldn't look at them and say, hey, you need to widen Baker Road for five miles. You know, we wouldn't be able, we'd have to look at the impact they're having versus what's there, and kind of evaluate at that point. But we don't lose the ability to require a traffic study. Now, we do lose the ability, if you zone it commercial services, I can't make them do the mini warehouse expansion, you know. If they were to come back and say, well, we decided to do this, which is allowed by the zoning, the use is what, if it's allowed in the zoning, you know, that, you can't stop that. But we don't lose the ability to require the traffic study, to answer your question.
That was my concern, because if it comes into turn lane improvements or something, especially if you put in a traffic generator, like a gas station or convenience store or something like that, it's going to generate a whole lot more than that.
Right. And at that point, I think we would have the ability, well, I know we have the ability. In our zoning ordinance, we actually have certain parameters, but there's also a catch-all in there that basically says if, you know, the county engineer or planning director feel that one is warranted for various other reasons, they can still require that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if it's expanded, if the storage facility is expanded, they probably won't have another entrance. It probably will not add any more traffic onto Baker Road if, if it's a storage unit.
Well, they have an existing, right, they have an existing access. Now, that doesn't mean they couldn't ask for another one, but there is an existing one already on Old Nashville Highway, correct?
But we would have some influence in that as well.
Yes, there'd have to be a site plan, that's correct.
Correct. And so if it is many storage, it probably is not going to add a lot more traffic there. If it's something else, we have the ability at site plan to influence traffic studies, turn lanes, those type of things. With that, I'll make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Second. I have a motion to approve, Commissioner Phillips, and a second by Commissioner Bogle. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, it does pass. Next item, A2, Mike Kahari from Murfreesboro Investment Group, REZ 23007, location 2909 and 2913, Barfield Road, Veterans Parkway. Commissioner, District 7, Mike Kush, size of site is approximately 4.1 acres. Tax map, 124L, Group A, parcels nine, 10, and 11. Existing zoning, residential medium density, and proposed zoning is commercial services. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant would like to rezone these tracks, as you stated, to commercial services. This is located within the Barfield Rural Center, as identified on our comprehensive plan. You'll notice the property directly across Veterans Parkway is actually zoned rural center. They looked at that as a potential zoning classification, but requested instead for commercial services, really for a little wider range of uses, especially at a signalized intersection along a major arterial like Veterans Parkway. The applicant has shown proposed buildings on a engineered, basically concept plan. You do have a copy of that on your iPads. Mike's showing it right here on the, the big screen as well. You can see he's looking primarily, the, I think the first real phase of this is going to be that proposed gas station. They're located on the corner. And then you see there's some proposed additional buildings there, three additional buildings, about 5,000 square foot each. Incidentally, that would be the maximum allowed under the RC zoning as well, so they're not really asking for a larger building than what would be allowed under the RC. Although, with commercial services, they're not limited to that. Just want to make that, aware to that. Again, this is not something that's binding, because this is not a planned development, that this should give you an idea of what they are looking for. Access is shown onto both Barfield Road and Veterans Parkway, and they do show screening on both the eastern and southern boundaries. Now, understand, again, should this be approved, it would have to be an engineered site plan submitted to our office for our review, which would come back before the Planning Commission for your review. As stated, the concept plan does show access along Barfield and Veterans Parkway. During the pre-application meeting, staff informed the applicant's representative we would expect, expect traffic improvements along Barfield Road, similar to those that were required for a similar rezoning and use across the street, basically widening of the, well, lengthening, I should say, of the turn lane, you know, widening the section right in there in the existing right of way, those kind of things. You can see that Mike's pointing out that there is a right turn into the property off of Veterans Parkway as well. So we would expect to see something similar, should this application be approved. I discussed the buffering. A type two buffer would be required between commercially and residentially zoned property. They are showing a 15-foot type two buffer along the southern property line, which would be with a solid fence, and then a 30-foot buffer along the eastern property line, which, that wouldn't be a fence, that would just be plantings, which, again, both of those are allowed by the ordinance, and our performance standards would still apply. Again, just to reiterate, the, in the comprehensive plan, a development node was assigned to this area, anticipating that there would be growth, especially non-residential growth in this area, so this is consistent with that. Overall, we do recommend approval of this request, understanding again that we will see a site plan, should this application be approved, come back before you. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
And the applicant's representative is present. I meant to say that, I'm sorry.
Mr. Whitworth?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make my comments on this. I travel this very regular. In fact, I came through just a moment ago, just to access and see what it looked like. I have been on this road in high-traffic times in the morning, and traffic backed up from that light past this property. I also see on your little picture that you show a tractor trailer, I assume a gas truck, turning right out of their property on Barfield Road, right across from the Methodist Church there. He ain't going to make it. I also wonder how mu, how he's going to get out and turn left on Veterans out of that. He's going to have to pick his times, because that's a highly traveled area. And it is not going to be easy to get traffic in and out of that at high-traffic times. And I also did not realize, until I read this, this description, that that Barfield Road had a 50-foot right of way. They're sure, they sure aren't using it. It's hard almost to pass two, two wide vehicles going down that road. I have passed tractor, I mean, dump trucks coming through there, and it is not fun. So there's going to have to be a lot of work done on that road, and it can't come unless they're going to buy the Methodist Church and move it. It's going to have to come off of their side.
Right. And if, if there were going to be any improvements on the Barfield Road, so I think that's really what happened on that site across the street, across Veterans Parkway. A lot of the improvements, like you stated, were going to be on their side of the line, because, yeah, they just can't go and, and, you know, go on somebody else's property. So you're absolutely right.
No one else? We'll ask for the applicant's representative to come forward. Mr. Taylor? Good evening.
Good evening. Matt Taylor of ACC 850, Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and we agree with everything that you said there, Mr. Whitworth. We've already started our traffic study. We've completed the counts, have not done the analysis, but we fully anticipate, basically doing what we did on the north side, or what we've got planned on the north side, which is extend a three-lane section all along our frontage, and then we'll have a taper back. And then we fully anticipate having a right turn lane along Veterans Parkway into our access point. And both of those would help with the truck movements, and because we'll be adding the pavement, all that stuff. But we'll have, before we submit our site plan, we'll have our full analysis, back to Mike, so they can, so they can review that. But we actually went as far as to buy additional property before we made this application. I think, we showed them the extra property that we purchased there, Mike.
On the north side?
No, on the south. So, so that was our original, kind of the bigger piece, that was our original piece of property. And then we met with staff. There was concern with having an access point that close to Veterans Parkway. So my client went ahead and put this property under contract and purchased it, so we could move that access point further away from Bar, the intersection, based on that meeting. And so my client is fully aware of the traffic situation. He obviously wants the traffic to work well. If people can't get in and out of his site, it's, you know, there, there are some intersections that are too busy. I think if you look at Broad and Thompson, you know, if you don't do good improvements there, it can be too busy. That's why some businesses struggled at that intersection. So we don't want that to be here.
And, and we will have to work with the city on this, even though this is outside of the city limits. Veterans Parkway is the southwest loop, and it's part of their maintenance agreement jurisdiction, so they will be reviewing any entrances on Veterans as well.
And I think that we've already broached, at least had initial conversation with, at least their transportation staff about that as well. And so we would share that traffic study back with the city, just like we did with the north side, and then they would review any of our roadway improvement plans along Veterans. They would not review anything along Barfield. That'd be entirely up to Mike and Sheila's department, but everything along Veterans, they would be privy to reviewing as well.
And the large parcel to the east is actually owned by the city of Murfreesboro. It was residual property that, when they made the Barfield Crescent improvements, so.
Other questions?
Matt, if I could, that whole block there appears to be residential right now, and there, I don't know how many, a dozen homes that are there. Have you conducted any type of a neighborhood meeting, or explained anything, what's going on to the, those folks there?
Yeah, we have not, and I have not received a single phone call after the notices went out either. And so I don't, I don't think Doug has either. And so just have not seen a lot of interest out there. So I do know that properties on the other side of Barfield, like directly across the street, just to the north of the church, that was for sale recently. I know they've cleaned up some stuff in there. I don't know if that got purchased or not. Looked like to be there were some development challenges with that corner, just no sewer. Didn't look like there was good septic availability, but there has been some activity on that corner recently. And we did, speaking of the church, Mike and Doug did make sure that we were, to point out the stone wall that's along a portion of that church, let us know that that was going to be off limits, regardless whether it was in the right of way or not. So we've already got that on our radar.
Other comments? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. We'll open our public comment time up. Anyone who'd like to come forward, make a comment either for or against on this project, may do so. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. I don't believe I see a large crowd coming forward at this time, so I will just close the comment period, and we'll move it into you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Bogle?
Doug, just wanted to ask, that southwest loop being part of the city that, that built that, designed that, does the signal, is it owned by the county or the city to be maintained?
It's city maintained.
City owns it as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, if the, if the traffic study has some additional right turn lanes on Barfield or anything like that, that any signal improvements that could be done there too may want to be included in that.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, is any of this property in a 100-year flood plain?
Just a slight.
Very tip of it.
The very edge of it. Yes, sir.
Well, I know the place that you said was the city. It, it, it gets pretty wet at times. I've seen that. seen that.
The very far eastern edge. And I think they're proposing, that'll be their detention area, it looks like. So like anything, this is a very nice concept plan, but it'll need to be refined into a site plan and show that it'll function.
Doug, is it reasonable to assume that that other odd-shaped piece of property that also has some floodplain in it would eventually go commercial to some degree? Is that reasonable to assume that?
Are you talking to property right to the east of it?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about? Well, that's actually owned by, or owned by the city of Murfreesboro. So it depends on what they decide. If anything, they ever want to do with it, they may just keep it as the natural state that it's in right now.
Yeah, we recommended that they talk to the city about getting an access out to Barfield Crescent just for dispersion traffic, and apparently the city was not interested.
The greenway is across the road, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Right here. Barfield Park, just a little bit farther to the east.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how other planning commissioners feel, but roads like Veteran Parkway is, in my mind, where we need to be putting development, commercial development in the future on major ingresses and egresses. And although traffic is terrible there, it's better there than it is on Baker Road that we talked about a while ago. With that being said, I move that we approve subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Have a second, Commissioner Kush. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose. It is approved. Moving now into A3, Huddleston Steel Engineering for Jordan Lopez. REZ21007, locations Old Nashville Highway. Commissioner, District 14, Wayne Irwin. Size of sites, approximately 17.5 acres, approximately 10.2 acres to be rezoned. Tax map, 70 parcels, 17, 1706 and 1707. Existing zoning, commercial neighborhood and commercial general. Proposed zoning is a planned unit development. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm not going to spend just a whole lot of time talking about the history of this site. Most of you, well, I guess with the exception of Mr. Thompson, this is probably the first time you've seen this, and Mr. Gooch. But the planning commission has reviewed this on a number of occasions. There's been five public hearings on this particular piece of property. The last time it came before you was February of last year. And of course, what they're looking to do is they want to do an indoor traffic, I'm sorry, an indoor soccer facility. And they also want to have a couple of outdoor fields on it as well. You'll find the pattern book on your iPads. We also have a copy for the big screens if we do need it. The applicant's representative is also here to kind of run through things. Basically, at that last meeting, there was some discussion about the access to the property. They had made a change originally that was gonna line up with Reynolds Drive, but the applicant was having some problems securing the right-of-way that they needed to make the necessary turn lane improvements that they wanted to do, a right-hand only into the property. They ended up buying that property that Mike is circling right there, the RM-zoned property. So they are, they own that property now, even though it's still zoned. It's not part of the development that they're asking for, but they don't have the right-of-way issue that they were having originally. So at the last planning commission meeting, they said essentially, you know, do a traffic study, see what's warranted, what's not warranted, come back before us, and we'll kind of go from there with the application. They have submitted their traffic study. We'll discuss that in a little more detail as we go forward. But essentially, what the applicants asked for, again, is permission to use the property as a soccer facility. It's gonna be privately owned, so a privately-owned soccer club with the ability for them to have their own events on the property. A couple of things that, Mike's got the concept plan up there. Their pattern book shows that they want to, you know, they're proposing a 45,000-square-foot building. However, the dimensions of what they're showing are only 37,500. Basically, what they are showing, that's the minimum size of the building. They'd like to request approval of a 45,000-square-foot building to allow them a little more flexibility to expand in the future, should they desire that. They are still committing to do a right-hand deceleration lane into the property during Phase 1, which would be where they would build the building and the associated parking areas. The outdoor fields would be a later phase, Phase 2. There's been some discussion about when or if to put a left-turn lane in at this particular property. The applicant would like to kind of defer the left-turn lane until the Phase 1 has had a chance to kind of operate for a little while. And then we would look at the performance of the site and determine if a left-turn lane is needed on the property. So that's what the applicant would like to do. Something else that they've changed in the pattern book that's a little different from the last time we've seen this, the last iterations of this, they didn't have any lighting of the fields. They now are asking for lighting on, that'd be the northernmost field right there adjacent to the railroad tracks. Not for the one closer to Old Nashville Highway, but to the one that Mike is circling there on the big screen. So that kind of gives you just a rough overview of what they're looking to do. They are not looking to zone the entire property. Really, they're only looking to zone the back portion of the property, which is already zoned commercial general. They'd like to zone that to the planned development. The remaining land would be zoned commercial neighborhood as it currently is today. So that just gives a quick overview of the application itself. I know my staff report was a lot longer than that, but just for the sake of not reading the entire report, I figured we'd have the applicant come up to discuss any of the changes. Also, I'd like Mike to, you know, if he wants to talk about the traffic study before we open it for public hearing, then, you know, he'd have that opportunity as well.
Well, they did submit a traffic study, and it's by a third-party engineering consultant. I have a copy of it. By Phillips, RG Phillips Consulting. And it was conducted December of last year. And unfortunately, they did not have a scoping meeting with us. So we'd like this updated to kind of look at not just this entrance, but some other intersections in the area, and talk about hours of operation and things like that to kind of nail things down. And something else I noticed in the study was conducted, they did it on a weekday and also a weekend, because that's when they're gonna have hours of operation on the weekend as well. And unfortunately, the day they had picked was only a two-hour day when the schools were in session. So I don't think that gives them a full count of traffic on the road during a weekday. So that's, again, we would like this updated to reflect a full school day and not just a two-hour day. And this, you know, when we have a scoping meeting, we sit down with the consultant, the developer, the development team, and they talk, we talk about what's being proposed, and hours of operation, and when they hope to build the site. And we ask them to look at, you know, various intersections and the roads themselves for potential improvements on those roads and intersections. So a lot of rambling, but we do like the work that the consulting engineer, Rich Phillips, does. It's just that he didn't have a scoping meeting with us, it's kind of cleanup.
I will add just one other thing that I meant to mention during my staff comments. We didn't receive just a whole lot of phone calls about this, but I did get an email from one of the residents in the area who had gotten the notice and had written a letter about a year and a half ago about the traffic, you know, desiring to see the turn lanes, those kind of things. He asked that I read, well, I'm not gonna read the entire letter back into the record, but we still have it in the file. I did want to make mention that he did reach out and contact me. And I told him I would do that.
Doug, if I could ask a question before we get into our public hearing. There's CG and CS and CN. Any of those particular zonings, would it allow for that soccer complex to be built?
The interior building, yes. The exterior fields, no. What had happened originally on this, the applicant had originally taken this to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the outdoor component, because that's considered amusement and entertainment, I'm sorry, entertainment and amusement services outdoor, which we allow by special exception in pretty much every zone. That was denied, which is why he ended up going the planned development route, was to try to get it all under, you know, the one zoning application for the PUD. But as I've told them in the past, and I think I've even mentioned at the, during past meetings here, he could submit a site plan for the interior tomorrow if he wanted to, you know, an engineered plan. That would be allowed. Now, we would still have the ability to look at, you know, traffic improvements and those kind of things. But being that it would be completely enclosed, that falls under a different category in our zoning ordinance, which is allowed in the commercial general zone.
I'm struggling also to figure out, or try to figure out, why they're not wanting to rezone that whole piece of property or do it under PUD. As a planner, it doesn't make sense to me. Maybe he can explain it. Also, the property that they brought, that they bought, why aren't they including that in that?
Yeah, and you can ask them that as well. But, I mean, the conversations I did have with them was that, you know, he bought it, he just wants to use it as rental property, doesn't want to incorporate it into the overall design. So, I mean.
Mr. Kush?
I'm reviewing my notes of February 14th, 2022. And I'm gonna ask these three questions, Doug and Mike, and you give me a yes or no. We did ask for a traffic study. We got one, but it's inadequate. We wanted a commitment to a right-turn lane.
He's still doing that. That's correct.
But we wanted that in Phase 1?
Yes.
Okay. It says if not, I wrote down, if not warranted, a left-turn lane on Phase 1 based on a traffic study. And also said, it also says, if left warranted, must be constructed in Phase 1. So he has agreed to do a right-turn lane in Phase 1, right?
Correct.
Okay. And there was also discussion about buying that house, because as I recall the conversation, they needed part of that property in order to get a long enough turn lane in there.
Yes.
Make it work.
That's right.
So now he's bought the property, but now he's saying, no, I want to leave it as rental property. So you still are back to the same problem of February 14th. You don't have enough distance without that corner property to make the turn lane.
He has two access driveways, makes a loop along the front of the property. If he eliminated this.
It was like a stone wall or something.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. At the end of the driveway, that would have to go away as long as, and the driveway as well. So they could put a D cell right-turn lane in there with this removal of this driveway here.
So tell me what we've accomplished since February 14th.
They have a traffic study, but it needs to be improved.
Yes.
They bought the property. What else was the other one?
I mean, those were the primary thing. Like I said, they are asking for the ability to light the back field as opposed to not lighting it as they had shown in a previous version of the plan.
Okay. I thought they, yeah, I thought they had agreed to do the lighting anyway in our past discussion. I don't remember this being in.
To not do it, you mean, or to?
No, I thought they were gonna, I thought they had agreed we were gonna do the lighting how we wanted, whether, because I thought there was gonna be limits on the lighting.
Well, I mean, they have to do a photometric plan, right. I mean, that would have to be. But I knew that there was some discussion, as I recall it, now, maybe I need to go back, but as I recall it, there weren't gonna be, there wasn't gonna be any lighting on either field at that time. The last iteration of this, we saw.
Okay. But I guess regardless, let's go back to my last question. What has changed other than they have agreed to the right-turn lane in Phase 1 since our February meeting?
They did move the access back to line up with Reynolds Drive, because if you remember, that was what brought it before the commission last time, was they had actually moved the access drive. And after looking at it, we thought it made more sense to line it up with Reynolds Drive, but then they couldn't because of that piece of property there, not being able to get the right-of-way they needed. So they've since bought that property. So they have the right-of-way and everything that they would need now to actually make that, make that connection to Reynolds Drive, that lining it up, the access road, the existing access to the property.
All right.
I'll make one comment on this. I've not been a part of this piece at all. But just for Mr. Roundtree's information, as well as the property owner, I'm very familiar with this location, having worked with the gas industry. And there's a major feed that goes down that road on that side of Old Nashville Highway that's pretty critical. So if they're not aware of the costs associated with putting that turn lane in, it sits right on the edge of the highway there, I would really suggest they get a cost to do that. We're not talking about a low price to move that line.
This time, I'm gonna ask that the applicant and his representative, or whoever they have chosen, come forward. Mr. Roundtree?
Chairman Reed, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'd like to go ahead and address as many of the questions as I listed, to make sure I can bring some clarification. The history, as Doug had mentioned, has been quite involved. I originally went to the BZA, got through, well, we didn't get through BZA, so that forced us into more of a planned development type of action. At one point, we had approval, but we could not get the D cell lane to work. Our primary opponent for the project was where that white square is, Ms. Lori. She was the one who spoke. She was the catalyst behind a lot of the opposition related to what Mr. Lopez would like to do. But as since, she approached Mr. Lopez and said she'd be willing to sell the property, and he was able to buy the property. It's long-term plans. I'm not sure if it'll be the house long-term. But the reason we haven't, we pushed the zoning back to the back portion, that's all that he's really concerned about right now getting done, is the soccer complex for the outdoor fields. There's some pretty favorable soils there, so there's a future for that front portion, but we don't really know what that is. So with the planned development, we have to be fairly committed to what that's gonna be. And we didn't feel like we could include that in the PUD, because we really don't have any real, true, clear direction on what that's gonna be in the future. So we pulled it out of the PUD to make sure the PUD was only specifically to what we knew about. So the front portion will be future development, including Ms. Lori's house. So that's why we pulled it back. As far as the lighting, the reason we didn't light the fields, or we agreed not to light the fields, was because of Ms. Lori's opposition to that, because that would have been in her backyard, and she was very concerned about that. And with her being out of the play, now it'd be a rental house owned by Mr. Lopez. We feel like that's something he would really like to have. He won't be able to do that affordably initially in Phase 1. That's a pretty big commitment, but he would love to have the ability to do it in the future. There is that season of time where it's still warm enough in the evenings to play outside, but it's still, you know, you don't have to go in an indoor facility till it's really absolutely necessary in the wintertime. So that's important to know why the lighting is kind of coming on. It's really related to the adjacent use with Ms. Lori. As far as the turn lane, Mr. Lopez has agreed to do the D cell lane in Phase 1. What we found, and I apologize for the traffic study, I didn't realize that it was , there's two-fold. We had another traffic engineer we were working with on this one. Typically, we do it in-house, but our in-house was so backed up, we use a different consultant. He does a good job. But as far as the precons with Mike and Doug, that was a mistake on his part, and we'll talk to him about that. his part. And we'll talk to him about that. However, I think the traffic study did, he put a lot of emphasis on Saturday activity. That's really when the soccer club will be the busiest, is on Saturdays. So he, although the Thursday, I guess he picked was a day that just so happened that school was on a half-day or two-hour session, whatever that was. As far as the Saturday, that was the one that really has the most telling information as far as how the club will work on the weekends, because that'll be their peak time. So with that in mind, that's really kind of the history. There's been a lot of history on this. Mr. Lopez has stayed committed to try to get the soccer club built. They currently meet over at Oakland High School. They've been there for years. He's got a group of people that love to have this facility available to them. I'm not sure what's happening with the major soccer complex on Broad. I think that's been put on hold for a little bit. But he's excited about having his club have a place to meet long-term at this location. And that's really the history. I'll get into more detail if you need me to. That's the best I can do with what the questions were asked. And I'll give you more if I've got it. But there's, that's kind of the background.
Commissioners?
Clyde, let me just follow up. You gave an explanation to why he wanted to do half the property and not the other half of the property. To be real honest with you, I still don't like it. You mentioned long-term at least twice, okay? If he's going to be on this property long-term, it would be, make sense to me to go ahead and, and ask for a PUD for all of that piece of property, including that residential. I'm, I'm just concerned about long-term myself. And it, just to me, it, it makes more sense if you own that piece of property and you're interested in the soccer facility on that property long-term, that you'd go ahead and plan for the long-term. And to me, it just doesn't make any sense.
Any other questions for Mr. Roundtree?
Can I just ask a question? Because I, just for Mr. Phillips's question. As far as, if it's in a PUD, from my understanding, you have to be very definitive about the long-term use of that front portion. Mr. Lopez is not there. I mean, it's his, it's in his interest to make sure. It's his property. So he'll obviously do what's best, you know, in terms of best in his interests and make sure that club is protected. But we don't have a lot of information. There's a lot of information that is necessary to know what the maximum potential is for that front portion. And that's, the interest, his, his primary interest has always been to get the soccer facility up and running. The amount of analysis, soil studies, everything that's involved with that front portion would just be cumbersome at this point for the PUD because he's not definitive on exactly what he'd like to do. So that's why it's not included. Because I think, I, that's really the explanation as far as, it may not be satisfactory explanation, but that's really why it is where it's at. Because, because we're just not there. He's not yet there. He's just, I guess he's purchased Ms. Lori's house within the last year. We didn't know that would even be possible when we started this process. That was a holdout property. And, and we're making concessions with her on her septic field and access and buffering. And there's a lot of dialogue with her to make sure that she would have her primary concerns addressed. When she's no longer in play, it just kind of opened up, you know, a whole nother line of opportunities. So, like I said, there are some favorable things about that site that I think Mr. Lopez can take advantage of in the future. He's just not ready to commit to exactly what has to happen. And with a PUD being so definitive, that was our concern. Because we're, we're just not, we're just, he's just not there. Because his mindset's always been on the soccer fields.
Other questions for the applicant?
Quick with the traffic and the turning lanes, I'd be willing to bet you a dollar to a doughnut that this commission will not approve it without a turning lane going in first and foremost. Is he prepared to do that?
The right-hand turn lane, Mr. Phillips, for sure. I mean, that's always been a part. The left-hand turn lane, that's been the big one because that gets into a lot of road alignment. And that one, I mean, right now, again, the traffic study wasn't, there was two pieces of the process that weren't done appropriately as far as the process, as far as meeting first with the consult. But they did look at peak hours on Saturday, which is really when the maximum opportunity on this facility will be used. And it performed without any traffic improvements based on the traffic study as it currently sits. So, so I think there's been something, there's some language we would be willing to put into the book that when it's warranted, it's almost like, and I was talking to Doug and Mike about it beforehand, is there something we can put in the book that allows us to have the ability to get the, the D cell lane in, the right-hand turn lane in, which allows us to happen? Because Mike's right, with Mrs., with Ms. Lori's property, there was, there's a wall that literally was on her property that had to be moved in order to make that lane work. So when we acquired her property, we now can make that D cell lane work appropriately. The question is, is when would we have to do a left-hand turn lane? What would warrant that? The traffic study didn't say that on our peak hours that a left, left is warranted. But there's, there's some kind of language we want that if it is warranted, it's committed before a Phase Two development kind of component. Not exactly sure how to flesh that out. But that's, he, Mr. Lopez is more than willing to do what it takes to make sure that it works and that his operation works successfully as well. So, but there is a concern over, you know, the lighting on a Phase One, a left-hand turn lane on a Phase One that may not be warranted but would be nice, would be prohibitive on the front end for him to even get the, the project going. That's his biggest concern is how to get it moving without being bound to substantial road improvements that may not be necessary in the long run. That's kind of where he's at, if that makes sense.
Might make sense to him, but don't make sense to me. Turn lanes. You keep talking about long-term, and I keep talking about long-term too, Clyde. Long-term, somebody would come up to us and say, what were you thinking?
Right.
And, and once again, the, the left turn lane, I think is, is the most appropriate. The right turn, you can turn right into property and probably be okay with that, probably. But, but I'm, I'm not going to put myself in a position for someone to challenge me two years down the road, four years down the road, five years down the road, what were you thinking? And, and that, that turn lane is important. Once again, if, even if it is on, only on Saturdays, we, we run into it time and time and time again at schools and other places that traffic is becoming, it's, it's becoming a major, if not the major issue in, in rezonings and buildings and those kinds of things. So, once again, I can't speak for these other commissioners, but I will not approve it without that traffic, without that turn lane being first and foremost on the list.
But for clarification, we're talking about the right turn lane in?
We're talking, I'm talking about a left turn lane as you're coming from Smyrna toward Murphysboro into that property. Isn't that what you're talking about?
We've always, he agreed in Phase One to do the right turn in the D cell lane to make sure they can get off Old Nashville Highway as they move into the property. As far as the left-hand turn lane, that was the one that was really more of a Phase Two component to it that whenever, in a sense, whenever it's warranted, the traffic study's not saying it's warranted at all based on its current situation. And again, it was the two hours on a weekday, but that's really not their peak opportunity on weekdays. They really, very little activity on the weekdays as far as the club's concerned. Weekends are really where it's peak. And I think they had, the traffic study had 214 trips an hour coming out of there, and it still didn't warrant the, the traffic lane. For the left-hand turn lane, at least from my understanding of the traffic study. So that's the, that's the question mark is, is there a way he can go ahead and commit to doing the project with the right-hand turn to get them off of Old Nashville Highway? And then at some point, something is catalyzed that allows that left-hand turn lane to be studied. Once the facility is in place to really see the actual demand, that was really the goal. And again, that's to allow him to move forward with the project without getting into major road improvements on the front end, especially knowing those improvements may be catalyzed by the development once it's in place and it's pretty clear. But at this point, the traffic study's not saying it's necessary. So that's where we are. I, Mr. Lopez is committed to doing whatever it's going to take to get the project done. He's just asking for not having to do it all on the front end. And we're more than willing to go back and amend the traffic study to make sure it covers and make sure we get all the lanes accomplished, all the intersections that Mike and Doug would like us to have studied. But that's kind of where, we've always been there. We've always asked for that right-hand turn to be the first phase, the left-hand turn to be a second phase, just to allow it to not be all up front.
Do you know the timeframe for the second phase? I mean, is that one year, two years?
We really, it's, Mr. Lopez, would you have any idea what kind of timeframe we're talking between maybe a year? Probably a year.
Other questions?
Mr., Mr. Chairman, Mr. Demossi, would you address the commercial services and commercial general? What, the front part of the property there, what would be included into what he could do on that if it's not made into a PUD?
Well, commercial, like, and I've reiterated this, well, that's not the right word. I've, we've talked about this before, about the different uses allowed in the, in the different zones. Commercial neighborhood, we have three primary commercial zones. Commercial neighborhood is the most restrictive of the three. Commercial general is the most wide open of the three. Commercial services, and you can see there's a little bit of commercial services there in the southeastern corner. That's not actually part of the property. That's the one that's kind of in the middle between the two. Commercial neighborhood will allow for residential uses, which commercial general will not. Commercial neighborhood also allows for general retail, but only up to 5,000 square feet. Whereas, commercial general is pretty much wide open. Commercial general is going to allow things like auto dealerships and things like that that commercial neighborhood would not allow. So either the, the commercial general, again, would allow the indoor soccer facility currently. They, they could do that. Now, commercial neighborhood, I think that would be allowed by, let me see, just to happen to have this open here. Yeah, it would be allowed by special exception, the indoor. But the outdoor fields are allowed by special exception only in both of those zones. So, I mean, I can go into a more detailed use-by-use if you'd like, but.
No, that's not exactly where I'm going. If you go back, Mike, to where he's putting the PUD and leaving in the commercial general, I'm almost hearing that all he's really interested in is the soccer field.
The, the building?
Indoors.
The indoor.
The, the whole thing. He's not interested in the front part of the property. He's just interested in the soccer field.
Right.
There's one I'm looking for. The, what's to keep him from selling that front part off and retaining his entrance or so forth and putting in a lot of other businesses in front of his soccer fields, which is really what he's interested in anyway?
Nothing. I mean, it's, it's already zoned that way. So, yeah, commercial neighborhood, again, it's more limited, but nothing's stopping him from doing that right now. Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and make my sarcastic comment. If you're going to cut a dog's tail off, cut it all off at once and don't cut it off in pieces. Go ahead and build a turn lane.
Mr. P.
I admire this applicant's passion for soccer and for this facility. This has gone on a long time, and he's hung in there. He's done everything we've asked except for the left-hand turn lane, which he's agreed to do in, if warranted, in another phase. A turn lane is needed, there's no question. But he's bought additional property. Again, he has done everything we have asked to this point except for the left turn lane. My question is, is there a point here, two years, that we can hold him to, to let him get started with his project that has been held up for how long already? And at that point, point of time to look at it again and then, and then require the left turn lane? I see him looking it up.
And if I could add to that, maybe what we could do potentially is that brown area, call that Phase Two in the PUD, maybe without, it's not in the PUD from a defined standpoint because we don't know what it is. But if that was Phase Two, because that's a great concern, something's going to happen there and it's going to impact traffic. We don't know exactly what's going to happen there. What happens there will catalyze that left-hand, almost without a doubt. For, if it was commercial, you know, if it was just strip centers with just, who knows? It's still, everyone's going to want a turn lane there. We're pretty confident of that. So my question is, because to Ms. P's point, is there anything we can do language-wise in the, in the PUD that calls that front portion Phase Two? That if Phase Two's developed, that's when we, we build a turn lane. That gives him momentum to get the soccer club moving. And it also puts him on notice that whenever that Phase Two gets developed, whether it's him or he sells it, that's going to require a turn lane. And we feel like it will be merited at that point. It's tough, we're not convinced the soccer club's going to merit it at all, really, based on what we've, the flow that he's anticipating. But we know we need to do it in the future. So that would be, maybe that's a solution to call that. Because it's just, it's, it's just the definitiveness of the PUD with all the breakdowns of exactly what it's going to be versus the, the unknown. And I think we could, if, if it's necessary, we could probably include Ms. Lori's property, that box, in the PUD as well and say, hey, if that's considered Phase Two, because I think Mr. Lopez will eventually well-develop that. Like I said, there's some favorable soils there. It's, it's actually pretty nice, developable land. It's just when you have to make all the improvements, at what time is really the key. So I think it's a great point. But I'm not sure if that's something we can do.
Well, I have some, I do have some thoughts on that of how this might look moving forward in a situation like that. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have the public hearing first, get through all that, and then deliberate.
Thank you.
A possible solution, if there is one. That's just my thoughts.
We'll now go into the public hearing. Anyone like to come forward, express their opinion, either for or against. We ask that they do so at this time. No one's coming forward. Public hearing's closed. Now, discussion, Commissioners?
Chairman, if I may add something?
Yes, sir.
You should also consider, we've asked them to line up their driveway with Reynolds Drive. So that's to help reduce the, the offset conflicts. If it were not directly across from it, it would cause issues. So when they do a southeast left turn lane into the site, you will also see a northwest left turn drive into Reynolds. You just don't put one in without the other. You've got to have them both in so that they coordinate and work well together. We require that everywhere. We just don't put a striped lane that, you know, people going into Reynolds Drive will need a left turn lane as well. So that's, consider that as well.
Commissioner?
I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm struggling with the fact that we don't even have a traffic study really that's valid. It's what I'm hearing Mike say. It's not up to a standard that we can make a decision on. I commend the need for the soccer, you know, for the soccer complex. I'm glad to see that someone's trying to do this with their own money. I didn't hear anything that the property owner is aware of the cost it's going to take to even do the gas line, if any. I'm not too sure he has a clue about the turn lane. It's just too much for me to say that we know what we're doing at this point in time without proper information. We don't have traffic studies, what I'm hearing. I mean, we got one, but it's not accurate. So I don't know how we can make a decision whether we need a turn lane or not.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Can you pull up the concept plan again?
Yes.
With the, showed the phasing a second ago. This is kind of going back to what Mr. Roundtree was talking about prior to us opening and closing the public hearing, about the possibility of getting Phase One started and then maybe labeling everything else as Phase Two. I would assume the fields and then the rest of the property would just be a, a future Phase Two. I mean, I think that is, that would make the whole property zone plan development, as Mr. Phillips was alluding to a little earlier. Something else that I think would have to be a part of that would, of course, be understanding that if that front part would ever be developed into something, I mean, at the front end, you're not looking at any proposed uses. So that would mean that any future changes to that front part, which is, I guess, a future Phase Two, or whatever you want to call it, that would have to come back through the process as a PUD amendment. Because as of right now, unless he specifies specific uses, if there's not.
specific uses, if there's none specified, essentially what he's got is property that's not zoned for anything. I mean, it's zoned, but it's not, there's no associated uses, that's a better way to say it. So, I mean, that, that approach may have some merit to it, especially if Phase 1 is just going to be the indoor facility and the parking area and the access and the right-hand turn lane. You know, if we were to condition a, you know, a left turn lane upon any kind of a Phase 2 approval, be it the fields, be it the front part, I mean, that is an option. That is something. Now, if that was the direction that they wanted to go, you know, outside of the whole issue with the traffic study that Mr. Thompson was just talking about, this is going to have to come back because this was not advertised, nor was the planning, that PUD pattern book established as the whole property being PUD. It's going to have to go back through the whole process, you know, start to finish. So, just, you know, this project has been through a lot. Of course, we don't measure performance by how long it takes to get through the process. We want to make sure it's done properly and done correctly. So, you know, when I look at my City Works online where we track all this, most of my zoning cases have about 20 or 25 steps. This one has about 60 now, of all the different meetings and things and over and over. So, it's a fairly long list. But, but anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion, if nothing else, just how, you know, as a possible direction forward on this. That would also allow him to, the possibility, if he wanted to include Mrs. Step's property that they've purchased on the frontage there of Old Nashville Highway, if he wanted to include that in it, he could do that as well. And he could just keep labeling it as rental property if he wanted to, or maybe incorporate some of that into the land for Phase 3. That would be kind of up to him, what direction they'd want to go with that. Thank you.
Mr. Bogle?
So, as that sketch is labeled now, Phase 1 says deceleration lane, and that's associated with the enclosed soccer field. And then turn lane in Phase 2 associated with addition of the outdoor fields. Did the traffic study substantiate that recommendation, or are they just putting the left turn lane in because we've talked about it so much? Was it warranted at that point? Because if it was, I don't want to call another phase a Phase 2 when those three fields warrant the turn lane at that time. I don't want to shift the phasing if it's warranted at that time.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm a little confused. But then also, too, if we need to go back and update the traffic study, I want to make sure we get it right there. I'm a little back and forth on how to answer that one.
They evaluated as three soccer fields, is how they evaluated it, counting the indoor one.
And the recommendation in the traffic study warranted the left turn lane?
The recommendation in the traffic study said there was not enough opposing traffic to cause the need for a left turn lane.
Even with all three?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes.
Now, the other part of that, while I've got you, the location of this site and being on Old Nashville Highway, are you looking to, I know we need to add other intersections to analyze, would one, I'm trying to think of how that traffic would exit from a tournament or all three fields in use and they let out. I'm thinking they go back toward Florence, they go down toward Thompson Lane. Is that, is that part of what you're talking about?
Kind of what we look at. Where will the traffic eventually dissipate and?
Because that's not an easy site to get in and out of as far as access. There's no access to 840 and direct access. So, that, I'm trying to think of where they would logically go and if improvements are needed on those. Is that what you're thinking about, including as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I've been to these fields several times, not soccer, well, soccer and volleyball. And the traffic study, you know, the ballgames, everybody gets there at different times, but everybody lets out at the same time. And I know this is, this is a private company, but when you have three fields, for him to make a profit, he's going to have to use all three fields. So, the first building may not warrant a turn lane, but as Lee was saying, when you've got all three fields, you will definitely need a turn lane, if not already, before the even front is even thought about.
Doug, I'm not sure I was real clear on the thought that you had. Could you paraphrase that, if you could?
I'll try. Mike, could you put that concept plan back up? Thank you. From what I understood Mr. Roundtree to say, if they were to take that front part that's labeled Phase 3 and kind of combine that with the rest of the development and just call everything that's not the building, the parking area and the right turn lane as, everything else would be Phase 2, the building, the turn lane, everything, that kind of thing, and the parking area would be Phase 1, we could condition that a turn lane be made before any development of a future Phase 2. I mean, that is a possibility. You could even say, we're only going to do the PUD. We're not even going to look at the outdoor fields right now. We're just going to prove it for the indoor Phase 1, the parking area and the turn lane. The rest of the site's going to be Phase 2, and then make them come back for a PUD amendment for any outdoor fields, for any development of the front portion. That's a possibility. Did that help at all?
Yes. Could we move on that tonight?
No, at this point, because the Phase 3 area is not part of the PUD right now. They'd have to go back and completely rework the pattern book and everything. So, I don't think you can move that forward. I think that should come back. Plus, it gives us the opportunity, and them, the opportunity, to update the traffic study based on what it calls for in our zoning ordinance as far as how a traffic study is supposed to be performed.
I like your suggestion. Is there anything we could move on tonight to get this thing going forward?
I don't think, I mean, if you defer action on this, and I know we've done that several times, at least at this point, they know what direction you're looking, and they can start working in that direction to bring something back based on what they're hearing tonight. But I don't think you can do anything tonight to move it forward unless you're just approving it as is, as they're showing it.
So, a motion to defer would be, should be worded how?
I think you can just defer it, just make a motion to defer based on the discussion we've had tonight. I think it's pretty clear what the commission's looking for.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to defer and give everybody the opportunity to revamp, relook at what we have discussed, tune, retune the traffic study and encompass a meeting with Mike Hughes and planning, as well as address the other comments we've made tonight. So, I'll make a motion to defer.
Have a motion to defer. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second.
David, with the understanding that I'm much more open to that right-hand deceleration lane now and then the left-hand turning lane with Phase 2. So, the only thing we would be looking for, Clyde, are you listening? The only thing we would be looking for would be that right-hand deceleration lane, but shortly, anytime you begin construction on Phase 2, we would be looking for that left-hand turn lane. Does that make sense for the second?
Which would also expand the entire PUD to include that frontal section, right?
That's under staff comments, I would say.
Yep. Okay. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Jeff Phillips. Mike Kush.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Chip Pinion.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Jim Thompson.
Yes.
Tettis Reed.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Has been moved to defer. Moving now to item 4, zoning ordinance amendments, ORD 23001, revision to Charter, Chapter 10, flood hazard district, planning and engineering staff, as the applicant, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You'll recall at our last meeting, we brought forward some proposed amendments to our Chapter 10 of our zoning ordinance, our flood hazard district. At that time, I said I would take as much or as little time to discuss these changes as you wanted. Tonight, I'm just going to read through the entire thing, all 43 pages of it. I hope that's okay with everybody. Just kidding. As we discussed at the last meeting, FEMA has spent the last several years making some updates to the flood hazard maps, not all of them, but several of them. And they've also sent us an updated model ordinance. What you are seeing on your iPads, and again, I'm more than welcome to, more than happy to go through any specific questions. The changes that we're making really are not changing the process that we currently use in any way. We're updating the flood maps that we are required to update with the new effective date. There are some that are keeping their same effective date as they've had, but there are several that are changing, so we do have to update that. We're also clarifying some of the, again, the process that we currently use to make sure that it's explicitly stated as such in these regulations. Nothing is going to change with the way we handle our flood zone enforcement with these changes. These are required by FEMA, by the state as well. So, we're just bringing these forward for your consideration tonight, hopefully with a recommendation for approval to the county commission. I'll turn it over to Mike. He is our floodplain administrator. I know he's gone over these with a fine-tooth comb. He may want to add a few extra things.
So, Doug is right. They had, they sent us their model ordinance, what they require. And we had to go through with a fine-tooth comb and make sure it met with not only their requirements, but also the county's requirements. So, we have a higher freeboard requirement for houses than, say, the city, or say, FEMA does. They only require the finished floor to be one foot above the base flood elevation, whereas we require three feet to give a little bit higher factor of safety for livable spaces. Now, non-livable spaces, we do the same at one foot above for a barn, shop, a commercial building, anything like that, just has to be one foot above. But we felt it very important that they sent us the whole, their model ordinance, we had to go through and make sure that we didn't go backwards and to a lesser standard that they had. So, that's essentially what we did in addition to updating the number of maps. That's kind of it in a nutshell, but I can, like Doug said, we can read through the whole thing if you'd like, or?
You're okay with this, correct?
Yes, sir.
After going through it?
Yes, sir. We worked with the planners, also building codes, because they have a big input in this as well. They make sure that the houses are built to the FEMA standards. Say, if it's in a FEMA flood zone, building codes, inspectors, they review the elevation certificates to make sure that they, the houses are, and the ground underneath them, the HVAC pad, everything's built above the base flood elevation, so the home is protected.
Let me just make sure, we're still, we would still be at three feet?
Yes, sir. For residential? Yes, sir. That's what we had to go back through and make sure everything, we're not going backwards.
Yeah, we actually go above and beyond what FEMA requires on that. So, the model they sent to us was really more FEMA's standard language.
Right.
So, we wanted to make sure our requirements were reflected.
So, as long, we will submit this same plan to FEMA and FEMA, and they review it, and as long as they're okay with it and they approve it, we're locked into it.
Okay. Further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, so, Michael, to be clear, the red type is the county's edit to the FEMA report?
Yes, sir. These are things that we've added, changed.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure the red was not the FEMA additions to the old report.
No, sir.
So, these are the county comments. All right, thank you.
Yes, this is the red letter addition, right here.
I had one question. When you mentioned AC pads, Mike, does that mean the duct work could actually be down in the water in the flood zone?
No, sir. It's supposed to be elevated as well. And we struggled with this. Nashville has an even higher factor of safety of three feet, above, four feet, actually, total, four feet above the base flood elevation. So, we, I talked with Tanya Bell, the codes director, about this. But the duct work has to be above the base flood, or it has to be waterproofed. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more questions she may have? I was certain that every one of you went home after the last meeting and took the direction of our director and read these at bedtime.
Yes.
But I'm going to, I'm going to call a public hearing to order. Anybody like to come forward, may do so at this time. I do not see anyone that is making their way. I'll call it to end, and then leave it up to you. And what we're doing, as I said, this is red, the red letter are the changes that we have here. And that's what we're talking about in these changes right here. This is very important to this county. All of you are seeing every time we bring a plat up here with what is coming before us now and the properties that we see. We're seeing this every time it comes up here and what's out here with the sinkhole situations we have, the water that we're having, the changes we have in Rutherford County. So, this is vital, and these changes are important to us. Other comments? Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we approve this, and I appreciate Mike and Doug and everybody's helping. I agree, this is very important to us. It affects everything we do when we go to plan. And so, this is a lot of work and this many pages. So, kudos to our team for doing what they did, and I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved. And just to remind that all rezoning requests will be considered on April 13th, 2023, before the Board of Commissioners. Do we have any old business?
No, sir, we do not.
Staff reports and other business?
I have nothing further. Mike?
Anything else that should be coming before this commission? If not, our next planning commission meeting will be at 9:00 AM on Monday, March 27th, 2023, here in this courthouse. This meeting is adjourned.